....................................................................................
Uh, I have a question. Uh, we have a fire department grant on November 10th and November 24th. What was the difference?
I don't know. Do you want any more details on Sheila Edwards?
With the proof of it in both meetings, so what we do.
Yeah, I think, I can look back on this.
If you look at your minutes, you'll see what we, what we...
Okay, we approved it with a contingency that... We approved it with a contingency that, um... Let me see. Contingency that we reject without penalty, that we could reject the... I remember this one, okay. It was made with contingency that we could reject the grant without penalty. And then we had to go back and redo that motion, Donnie, because we had... She was not going to write the grant and not be paid for. And then find out that we didn't have the money and she wasn't going to get paid for it.
Okay, so her minutes were rejected, huh?
Yeah.
Well, here's how it reads. The motion was made by Gregson. Uh, no. We get there. I'm not sure if she did.
Motion was made by Mayor Inglis, a second, by Gregson to hire Sheila Edwards to write a fire department claim a grant with a contingency that we reject without penalty. I thought it should've said that we could reject without penalty.
Okay, so we need to come back from the 124 and rewrite it to say the motion was made, seconded, that we could reject. Or has it been agreed? I kind of figured what's...
Now, did we write it that way?
No, no.
Or did we not go by the way it was spoken? She was not going to write the grant the way that motion was made because she wanted to make sure that she got paid for her work. So, the second grant, the second motion was made by Gina and myself just to simply hire her with another contingency about us being able to reject that grant. Right, because the first way, the way it was, the motion was made was the way I approved it. And then once she didn't want to do it that way, that's why we had to go back and do it a second time. I think it's appropriate the way it is stated. I don't think anything to say, well, this is why we're going to redo it.
It may be confusing to anybody to look at these minutes and say, okay, what's the difference? And the whole idea of the minutes is for the general public to be able to determine.
For anybody.
Anybody.
Can I get a copy of both of them? I don't have it.
There's only still the issue, there's a bad one. And...
There's... What'd you use?
I gave it 24.
Okay. Here's the... I got a service short.
So, the change on 24th was taking out the contingency that you can reject without penalty?
Right. Which was how they worked it in me, so that's the way I wrote it.
Okay. I think that much is clear. What's the... What gave it this... That's the question.
Well, I'm looking at it, I'm a little confused. Uh, we have two of them on there. So, the second one say, uh, would write to reject. I figure you automatically have that right to reject, but if I'm looking at both of them, I get a little confused with one, why they're both there.
Well, I mean, the first one said something a little different, but it has a contingency language in it, and the second one doesn't. Right, I think that, if that's the only change that we made, then I think that that's clear. But I can tell, uh, November 10th, that in that meeting, the one that has some, there was a contingency, I will agree with the November 10th point, we worded, it probably needed to be worded a little bit better, but here it appears that in this one, that contingency was lifted, which is what happened.
Right.
So, I think, I think we're okay.
Okay, but it doesn't, to me, I don't think we hired her, what we paid her. You know, when you hire somebody, it doesn't show contingent upon getting the grant or...
Right, but was the payment discussed and was that part of the motion?
Yes.
We discussed, we discussed it, uh, at that meeting, it was a 10 percent automatic against the grant.
10 percent of the grant, a...
10 percent of the grant.
Yeah, and that needs to be, if that's what was discussed, then that does need to be addressed.
Did we have to say, we hired her contingent upon getting the grant?
Well, I mean, 10 percent. 10 percent, yes, of the grant.
The confusion was if we turned the grant or what, because we didn't have the matching warrant.
Right.
And she still wanted to be paid for 10 percent for it.
Okay, and so what happened?
Where it's a little still...
Just about happened.
Still being...
Then we, the next month, we went back and we hired her to do the grant and took out that phase that said a contingency if we turned down the grant. So, she was hired to write the grant contingency on the grant.
Not worry, we got the grant, we refused it, though we didn't have any money, we still had to pay her.
But we were, the grant has already, we have not, we did not receive the grant, our number of...
The grant, that's still, is that still in process?
They haven't dropped out. They, they started dropping the grants out, but they haven't.
We haven't been able to try again.
Well, I'll, I'll agree that the one that says something about contingency, the contingency itself probably does need to be spelled out in those minutes, so it is clear what the contingency is. And, but the November 24th one is...
Right, right.
Is, the, the number of 10 probably needs to spell out the contingency so that it's out here.
Well, this one actually is the one we changed with the contend, uh, that we would pay her upon accepting some grant, like that we just hired her. I mean, that just says, I pay her money to write the grant. No, she writes the grant, if we don't get it, we don't pay her. You know, so it needs to say that, uh, hire her...
Okay, let's...
She wanted, I don't know whether we... She wanted to know whether we accepted yet.
If we got the grant.
Hey, that's, that's good. My suggestion's gonna be, since this is a mess, that you do not vote yes on this, that you get with Gina and get the correct language in both of these minutes on that particular item and put it on the next month's agenda to approve. Okay? Because there's, there's a lot of confusion here.
Resent the motion?
Huh? You can agree to send the motion.
Mary, resent the motion. So, we didn't think...
There should be no action on the two, on the three as well.
No action on the three is...
Okay, item number four, approval reject, considered agenda consistent of the minutes of the regular meeting held on April 13th, 2015. Make a motion to approve. We have a motion.
I have a quick one, 13, I find it. Up here.
13?
Yes.
Missed it. 13.
Yes. Uh... I have to place my camera up later. I'm gonna know, I guess mine will be in a big business on that, or we're coming. You might accept that.
We have a motion, a second, and a second. Any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Item number six, public forum, is there anyone here for the public forum? Hang on. Oh, hold on. Sorry, let's go back up to number seven. Approval reject, considered agenda consisting of minutes of the special meeting held on April 23rd, 2014.
I know. Do you want to read the 15?
Yes.
23?
It's in 2014, it's the time.
It does say, oh. The minutes are appropriately dated, can we still go ahead and...
Yes.
I make a motion to approve. Do you have a motion?
On the agenda, 2014, but the minutes are dated apparently.
Okay, we have a motion. And is there any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
And the rate?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Now, item number six, public forum, is there anyone here for the public forum?
Um, I was just wondering if we actually have a town's mission statement?
No, we don't. Uh, we have some ideas for one, but we do not have one. My thinking was, I didn't know if the whole town needed one, or if each department wanted to do one, however, uh, or do it all that way. Do you have something in mind?
Uh, no, I was just wondering if, if you guys are, on the board, we're gonna do it, or if you would like to ask, you know, public opinion on that, or, you know, if it gives us an idea of what we need to focus on, or what the, how the town, you know, what mission segments do. So, I was just wondering how the board would feel about that.
I think it's a great idea, I think you have to...
Thank you.
Oh, the question's wondering, is there any way we can fix Railroad and Veterans Street? I mean, you guys drive on it too, right? You've seen how terrible...
At that intersection?
At, I mean, at, where already tried to pull out on the highway to get out in front of people, yeah.
Actually, I talked to the county and they're gonna take care of it.
Railroad Street Two?
Railroad, but on Veterans, the highway.
Yeah, what about Railroad though? It's been terrible for a long time.
I'm not sure if we're real, we're talking about Railroad.
I'll drive around and I'll look and see what it is.
I talked to the county and it says, Veterans is partially county. They agreed to go ahead and put some asphalt in those holes when it quit raining.
That's a good day.
Yeah, thank you.
So, soon?
Yeah, soon on that, it'll be...
What about Railroad though?
I'm not sure.
I said I'll look at Railroad Street.
Yeah, I know, what I'm telling you is bad.
Well, we're outside.
I drive it every day.
It is bad, I'm driving it.
The whole thing, or just a certain...
Uh, right where you come from the police department, for one thing, and then just in front of law, in front of the little kid's school, that's I go and get my little girl by...
The intersection, uh, our department.
I believe so, our problem's gonna be that we probably use our money for street maintenance.
Why don't you guys put a bunch of asphalt in the library parking lot, instead of patching roads that everybody uses?
We've been purchasing asphalt to patch up the roads as, as we could, but as I was looking at our funding there, I think we were about to completed it this year, so...
You took a giant load and put it in the library parking lot, instead of putting the roads that everyone drives.
Yeah, I, I wasn't sure that that happened.
And I wasn't sure...
Why aren't you aware that happened, did you know that it...
Well, this keeps...
I mean, you're in charge of the hiring, you should know where everything's going, shouldn't you?
Well, I have a 60-hour a week job too, Sam, and so it's kinda hard to, to be over here. You have to rely on your supervisor to the top, he's got many, many...
You gotta hire good people and rely on them.
Okay, that's, that's another issue.
No, I'm still asking you about the asphalt, they're lying there on, you don't know where to put it.
Did we put asphalt in the library parking lot? Was it in need of repair and more, more important than putting it out on the streets?
There was just some potholes in that parking lot, and of course, paper, we were getting a lot of complaints about it, so we just, uh, we used...
To service the area that you were getting the most complaints. So, are you aware of Railroad Street? I have not heard of Railroad Street.
But if you thought holes all over town, there'd never be more after this rain, but...
So, did the library complain, or how was that?
It wasn't the library itself complaining, it was just people, you know, we were just getting calls from customers and what that is. And it was, it was bad.
Do you feel like I need to be supervising you daily to show you how to do your job?
Well, I, I thought you pretty much did.
I did, I got it. I think I can count on you, if you need something, you know where I may have to kinda contact me, you do usually.
Okay, well, then wherever my car, the mechanic will come to for a new alignment, wherever all I do is drive my car and just count, are y'all gonna pay for it?
Yes. Okay. Yes. No, I'm...
Yeah?
I mean, we all have that, just, maybe, okay, let's get on.
I just have a question. Um, are, at some point, you know, it seems like there's a lot of things that y'all are dealing with, trying to get it in order, things that maybe in the past, you know, have gone for a while, and you're trying to tend to them now. I appreciate that. So, one of them seems to be like there's no real personnel policy, that is to say, you know, how your whole hiring process goes, you know, from announcing the positions, you're hiring it, um, you know, there's some general things typically, like, uh, fitted in a paper, and how that process works as it, as the paper hits over here, and people actually submit their applications for jobs, from that point on through the, um, you know, sort of the interim process, and then what's to happen after that. Okay, that's one. Uh, the other, the other is for, for unmet needs in our city, like, that is to say, things that probably should happen, you know, services that city people are in need of. And this is one of my big issues about giving people a bonus and giving them a salary increase before we really did an inventory of what the unmet needs were in the city. And, uh, to, to, for my way of looking at things, it's a little bit of experience that I've had prior to getting down here, uh, you know, there's typically a, um, a formula that you follow that says, you know, uh, how much bang are we getting for a book, you know? Uh, how, what are people doing, you know, what, what are people doing? How much time are they spending doing it in order to calculate a personnel cost? The other is, you know, how well are we providing service to the citizens of our town vis-à-vis road maintenance or sewer issues, or whatever it is? And is there any plan, do you think, or have you talked about it, maybe you probably already talked about it, to address those things so you can quantify and qualify what it is that needs to be done, what our priorities are? You know, would it be roads, or would it be, you know, these gullies, I'm not saying that...
Well, there's many things, and we wish we could take care of them all at the same, you know?
No, that's not gonna be possible.
No, no. I believe that would be a good meeting to try...
Well, hopefully that's part of the budget process, what I call a cost benefit analysis.
Had the sewer rined over every time, sprinkles? I know if we flew.
Yes, and we get...
Yeah, it runs over every time.
And that's, that's what we did tonight, was, uh...
Pretty gross.
This contract that we actually awarded tonight was to try to take care of that on Veterans Street. But what you've gotta do, and the home was right, is we have to do a cost benefit analysis on what we do. You know, is it beneficial to spend $10,000 on this, but we only get a hundred dollar benefit on it? You know, or do we go spend $10,000 here and we get $10,000 benefit? You know, we have to evaluate that. And god cost, you know, so there's a lot of stuff that's gonna be involved, hopefully, in the budget process.
It's quite a process, because, you know, I, I always wonder when you, when you make decisions to hire people, what is it based on? The fact that you have a vacant position, like somebody just left, and you hire a replacement? Or is it based on something a little more substantive, like you, you cost, did a cost analysis on... I thought y'all had a vote on hiring someone. Things that happen and things of that nature. I thought y'all had to vote on hiring someone. Like, all of y'all had to agree, wasn't this going to...
We did.
We do equal. You guys all got, all went back there and voted on?
No.
No, we voted right here.
We voted right here.
On how? On cattle law? Okay. Who all said yeah? Everybody said yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Good to know. Okay.
And then let you know.
I know someone that said to my face that they would have, I said, come out, boy. So, that's good to know.
It was part-time, temporary.
That's fine, a job would be great. This man hasn't worked in months, he's been trying to get a job here. As I had to put him on his campaign. Oh, I never got a answer though. What is it about potholes, we're out of money again? We can't fill the pothole?
Should've looked at it.
Yeah, thought we were out of money, we didn't.
No, we're not out of money, we can't really. I was having a line item, and if you want me to give you this minute, we go back and look at that. But we've been hiring, buying as much asphalt as we could. I said, I know it's getting close, but I'm not sure if we have the money in there to go, uh, it's usually about $400 when we get a load of asphalt.
We're not only putting it on the roads that everybody uses.
He explained that, that he had lots of, he had lots of complaints...
So, there's nobody's came here and complained enough?
These are some of the things we're trying to...
We have to come to city council meetings to complain about the roads, I haven't heard anybody come here and complain about that library, or, you know?
No, there's...
Yeah. We just all keep bothering them, complaining about stuff? I didn't know that. I didn't know that. That's how you get it done, all right.
I'm saying that the squeaky squeal.
That's how you get it done.
Okay, that's one. Item number seven, approval reject, the general time purchase orders.
Make a motion to approve. And second, any more discussion?
I had a question on the sign here. Invoice, it was $370, it was for the police department. Uh, and what we did apparently was take in the car that was driven by Gina to go around and gave it to the police department, put new details on it. What would it have cost us to fix the other police car? And I had to buy the decals.
Obviously, we're worried about when they were taken, though, so it all just happened to be in the, in the maintenance department at the time they were doing it, and it was just like that, the car, that they were, the police car was just not much value at all to it.
What was wrong with the police car? What was wrong with the rest car? What went out?
I think it was over, and he was on vacation.
I think so, it was, it was a little off on vacation, I don't know. Although they traded out the car, that we gave to the fire department, I think, so cars went down, so what they did was... And my question was, when men take, we're just fixing their car, and I buy decals, they'll add two cars.
From what I got from Rain, it was not, but it was gonna be major issues with it, but I guess specifically...
I think we did a little old, I don't know what else.
I think it was...
You're talking about that other car that was...
Yes.
It was, it was flat, it had, uh, blank on the, what it called, index valve or something, and he said it would've cost extra $900 to get it fixed.
Do you remember what it was gonna cost?
Oh, I don't really know, but he said it had to be replaced, it was aluminum, I think he said, and it was, uh, it would be hard to replace, and the other car was just sitting there, so they said it, he said it'd be a lot simpler just to get that one going, and it runs a lot better than the one that he just got out of.
Actually, I was trying to determine if it had been cost effective, talk about the cost benefit analysis, to have taken that $370 for the detail and, and put in repairs on that car, knowing what you're saying, intake valve, that's what it was, it cost a lot more than $300.
Yeah, it was aluminum, and he said they're, they're, they're kind of, I guess they're kind of odd about getting that car back.
I see that, that was my question there, was if we might as we spent that $370.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven. Bailey?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Item number eight, approval reject, the town meeting, the pool purchase orders.
This one's gonna be just getting the startup money for the pool concessions, for your pool contracts.
I make a motion to approve. We have a motion? And the second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Conferences?
Yes.
Item number nine, approval reject, the cemetery fund purchase orders. Make a motion to approve.
Just monthly mowing.
We have a motion? And the second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Conferences?
Yes.
Item number 10, attorney's report for the town. Item number 11, discussion and action on annexation of surrounding properties.
Just to start, thinking about annexing businesses that are now currently outside of city limits, um, we really do need more revenue, this is a way to do that, and kind of, I'd like, uh, really with attorney, you can give it a price and a cost, what it would cost the city to do that, like the East Martin Hill.
We discussed this a couple of months ago, probably before you were...
Oh, really? Okay, sure. Are you five thousand dollars on that?
Yeah, I...
Five thousand.
Yeah, and what, uh, Donnie and Rod were gonna do, I think they were gonna do a lot of the, of the legwork, so that there wasn't need having to charge the town for that, and I, to be honest with you, I haven't touched base with them in a while on what they're at.
If you had the time to do that every day, that would be wonderful. I went over and worked there a while, I was at Lattler County and tried to get all that, and when I got that, I got information written down.
I actually spoke to Mike. I actually spoke to Mike, your Mike, and he was, uh, very interested in helping us also do some research on the annexation, and he was gonna make some phone calls and find out some things.
And to help clarify...
Okay.
The five thousand was if there was no contesting, right?
Right, yes, it's, if it gets contested, it'd be a little bit more, that was the, the bottom of the, I mean, that's, I think I, I think I give a range, it's been several months, but I think I give a range, I think the range was, was a pretty substantial range in there, because if we end up having, um, issues with, you know, people contesting it, we'll be in court, and I guess that's it, so...
Because we had to go all the way up to the right, I was at that meeting, you have to get, you can't be contesting in between city limits and there.
Yeah, I've gotta, gotta go all the way there, and every, and there's, and there's a statute, there's, everybody has to kind of basically agree, and they can get a lot of fight on it.
100%? Everybody?
I think so, guys, it's, uh, I, I deal with annexation about every five to 10 years, it's not something that comes up.
Right, shut up.
Yeah, yeah, but...
We need to do something.
And like I said, I know that, I know that they've never been able to do a lot of legwork.
And Sean, is there somebody else that maybe should be more efficient in that, had more knowledge, if we could hire?
No, probably not. I mean, really, one of the, one of the key components, if you remember, what we wanted you guys to do, is y'all know the people, getting a phone call from a lawyer, a lot of times is a little intimidating, uh, and, and it's a whole lot easier if, if Donnie[1617.32] And, and it's a whole lot easier if, if Donnie knows him, or you know him, or Gina knows him, to just give a call and let this fool play on doing. It helps kind of smooth it over a bit easier than, you get a phone call from a lawyer and it's almost immediate. People think, well, I need to be a lawyer and then it gets in the pictures, so.
I'll get a list and give it to you if somebody. On that. Okay, Michael, what's the last?
Item number twelve, discussion and action on protocol for the lot cleanup. Okay, I think we were.
Yes, and that's why I listed that before the lots.
Okay.
Because Gina had an idea of sending out a courtesy letter first to those that are new, I believe, not the repeat.
Okay.
And she cast one, we're going to brush it up a little bit and let the council see it. We also. Do we want one council member to be over the lots, or do we want to divide it up? Or how do we want to do this?
I, I think we need to actually, and I was talking on the agenda tonight to have a board.
Well, I did too, but.
And I don't know if we can discuss it here, but. Part of the protocol that I'd like for us to do is advertise for individuals interested in mowing these lots that come up to be mowed. So we get a list of individuals, three or four individuals that's who'd be interested in mowing. When we have one, we have to go out and mow and take bids off of those three, not just say it's automatically five hundred or eight hundred dollars for that.
Well, that's what we, those were bids tonight.
And so, I think we need to advertise in the paper, individuals interested in bidding to do lot cleanup for the city. And when we do have one that needs to be cleaned up, we can contact those individuals and say, give us a price. And maybe we can save a little bit of money because we're going to end up paying for it.
Well, what I was also wondering is, do we want to run all these by the council every time? Or do we want to have more authority by the? We used to do it that way. We had someone to help clean up and the letters were automatically sent out when there was a need.
But part of the process, again, I'm almost talking about cost benefit. Many live in a federal enforcement officer down the road. Where they're the ones that are going to look and say, hey, we're going to send letters to this person.
Well, right now, the council is doing that, I cannot take it.
I mean, I think it's ridiculous for us to go with one and.
I do too, and that's why when Rhonda and I did it and each did it different times.
But, you know, as far as, you know, this.
But I just.
How about we do this? How about we just designate few of them to work on it and send a courtesy letter? And then if the courtesy letter doesn't work, then we can come back and say, okay, now you're getting the nasty letter. About ten days to clean that up.
And I think about what she just.
Well, she's been running on us and sent out a courtesy letter.
I have, I've waited because I was hoping not to be anything about the council approval. What I was hoping for was the council's approval to let me just do the courtesy letters. If I get no action, then when we have to go to the, the next step, then I bring it to your attention. But if I can get a courtesy letter out, there is no reason in my, in my mind, why I would send somebody a hateful letter. When I could send them something nice, something says, you know, well, we just want to clean up the town. Yeah, that's fine.
And then, once it has to go beyond that? Then the, or you can, the council member that's over that.
Well, I think that's a protocol that we need to actually take a picture.
Right, right.
And add a documentation.
Sure. And that has that, the way I have it set up, and I kind of took from Rhonda's and.
But you can get that here, date it, the day of the law.
Yes, I, on this side, it's legal, it has the legal description, it has who owns it, all that kind of stuff. On this side, it's called proof in action. And it has pictures, dates, and anything like that. And any council member can come in at any time, pull a file, and open it up. Everything in there is documented and it's all written down on the side.
Since Gina's moved out of car to a city car, I have been going, she's given me this and I go take the pictures and.
I love how you were doing that. You know, we had figured that out too.
Yeah, so I was just.
It's not that I mind using my car. It's that I don't want my car to be known as the car that's taking pictures of so many property.
Anyway.
Yeah. And so, that's why I feel like.
Can you tell me, can you tell somebody that's workers when they're out? Can they identify a property that brings to her attention?
Well, that's why I thought, uh, here's the police department, the board going around. Yeah, that's why I think every board member should have a section in town and not just leave it to the public.
That would be fine, if you want to get a map, everybody down.
Yes, and I really think that would be the easiest way. Then not one is, is bird with the whole town. A large, that was actually a suggestion. Yeah. So.
So why can't you go within the lots?
I mean, I, I'm saying, I don't have a problem going to look at the lots. My question was, do you want me to drive my car?
That's why I've been doing it. And it's really not a, you know, it's not a big deal. Get you around to see a lot more, because the list she gave me, I added several to it.
That's good, I still didn't get that picture.
You also can try, minds, what would be mine to these people?
We have, it's on the second, the second letter is a hundred dollars.
It's when it gets hired is when they ignore the letters and ignore them, and we have to harass somebody to clean that up. But that was very well stated in the letter that they will happily.
And it's in your sample, which I believe, but the courtesy letter would be simple, it's what, I don't know, forty something stamps or a stamp? But what we were doing previously was, was a regular letter that's kind of.
Well, that's, that's what I wonder.
Can I make a motion to approve Gina Jones to send courtesy letters? Yeah, we're unlocking that without council approval.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirteen.
Can I ask a question if we all have unlocked, uh, cleanup, please?
Uh, are all these courtesy letters from the council?
I was just going to ask, in our ordinance, is it clear what a clean lot is supposed to look like?
Yes.
Do they have the parameters and is it easily enforceable then?
You can come by my office and I can give you a copy of it.
Okay.
The grass can't be over twelve inches. There's several things that we may need to add to it.
I don't know, somebody here might want to ask, what is really considered trash? I was like, wow.
Well, one means trash and another means true, that's what.
I have a question, and I know this is kind of, I don't want to take too much time, because I'm just on a long list. On the grassing tall, sometimes I let my certain types of grass go to seed, like my oak grass. Because I'm on a clay hill and it's necessary, and I don't want it to get filled high, but I want it to get about that high.
Well, I think they can tell that some are maintained in the regard that they're actually used. Because you're, I think there's several that do that. Okay. So I'm actually, item number thirteen.
Item number fourteen, discussion and action on reading state in the time clock. Do you want to take action on that?
I, I like where you start looking at it. I mean, we discussed it under public works.
I think we.
We need to discuss it and, and I do want us to actually, once we get through the books, sit down and start looking at each apartment, looking at how this is being perfectly managed and stuff like that. And, and the possibility of that happening. I can say we've taken action right now.
Okay. Item number fifteen, approve or reject granting a variance to allow mechanic garage at two oh five Ninth Street. Mr. John Mott, Mr. John Mott is here tonight. And he came to me wanting to put a mechanic's garage in a residential area. So he can give you more information about that. Yeah, come up to front.
Yes, please come out and share with us.
Okay, you have to eat and exactly what is your plan?
Have the paint shop there, six days a week. Or find somebody that'll be running seven or five, Monday through Saturday.
Mind if I'm there about Miss Lakehurst's house?
Mine was concerned in the residential section, they tend to get jumped up and noise on the mechanic. I mean, what do you do with the cars that?
I mean, where's wrong, you give it now.
Because I, I believe, to have five or ten cars sitting there waiting.
How much off should park it be now, after that report?
I was going to go tear down that house that's falling down and make a parking spot up there too.
So you're going to have like a yard, a convention yard or yard yard of cars in that area?
Well, just to try to save a little time, we can't do anything tonight anymore.
Right.
There are ordinances in our books on rezoning. And to do that, you'll have to actually put in an application to rezone that property. And then it has to go through a process, and we do have those in the books. And so, we technically can't say anything. So I would suggest that if you want to rezone that, that you come to City Hall and ask for a permit to rezone it. Ask for an application for zoning. And then it has to go through a process of being advertised and public hearing and everything else. And the board can technically be rezoned for any abuse of our respects.
Thank you.
And the board will decide if they have a point, John.
Okay.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action, it's scheduled with a special meeting to prepare the two thousand sixteen sixteen budget for the town of Tallahassee. We already did that. We did get that.
Twenty eighth of May.
The twenty eighth of May, five thirty. Item number seventeen, discussion and action on progress of yearly audit.
We also discussed that.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action on protocol for the lot of dated buildings.
I just opened up a discussion on this, there's some several.
I took a picture of the whole, up to the county line on First Street, the First Street. I mean, I didn't even know there was a building in one of those areas. It was so bad, I don't know if you own stuff, I didn't even, but I saw this and I, I had committed a little bit of a line, I didn't get any call. And so.
And I was just wondering, I wondered whether it would be to.
The, there is a process that we have to go through to.
Put the notice in the paper, modify the elements.
Yes, there's a.
We, we also have a couple of.
We actually have.
A couple of ordinances on it. Here will be in line, it's either nine or thirteen, and you always look at chapters. You've got to declare a nuisance and then you've got to go through the process and.
Is it hard to get it?
No, you've got to clarify the difference.
We do it, we have it.
Estimate the criteria of what a nuisance is.
Yes, we, we have, it's been a while, I believe, but it's, and it was used to be fire companies, but that's not.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action regarding fire extinguisher maintenance. So we discussed that in the table, uh, the public.
Hey, I checked on a couple of our fireworks dealers. You're probably right, we probably need to get behind them because I checked the bridge and it's like full seven. And they still said it's full and everything. But I'm concerned by those.
When trust date comes, then you.
That's all, I was talking to Brian, he knows that company that does that, I guess.
Well, we need to get them all in one location. Yes, they all have to. And he won't tag or be.
There's a donation for maybe not the last.
And so, the book I borrowed was back in your hands, you know that?
Item number twenty-two, discussion and action on adding John Bradley's signs to the bank signature cards as fire state bank. I make a motion to add John to the signature card. Also, second, more discussion. Vote. Bailey?
No.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, approve or reject entering into executive session consisting of title twenty-five Oklahoma State. Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seventy-one, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion. Disciplining or resignation of an individual salaried public officer, employee Gina Johnson. I make a motion. And a second, we need more discussion. Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Approve or reject?
Where's Don?
Don, there it is.
Oh, there it is. I know, but I looked up.
It's just small.
Approve or reject exiting from executive session? Make a motion to approve, we have a motion. And a second, any more discussion? Vote.
Bailey? Yes.
Yes.
And Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-five, action is any from executive session, there is no action taken at this time. Item number twenty, we are going to, if nobody minds, I'm going to move number, item number thirty-two, but to. So y'all have me. Okay, item number thirty-two, approve or reject entering into executive session consisting of title twenty-five Oklahoma State. Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seventy-one, discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion. Disciplining or resignation of an individual salaried public officer, employee Rick Rose, Angel DeLeo, and Dave Galbraith. I make a motion to approve. Have a motion? Thank you, I have a second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirty-three, approve or reject exiting from executive session? Make a motion to exit, we have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirty-four, action is any from executive session, there is, there is no action at this time. We need to go back up to item number twenty-six. Approve or reject entering into executive session consisting of title twenty-five Oklahoma Statute, Section three oh seventy-one. Discussing the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining or resignation of an individual salaried public officer, employee Josh.
Oh, I have a motion.
We have a motion? And a second, any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
Any?
Yes. Item number seven, approve or reject exiting from executive session? We have a motion? I stand this out in motion. Any more discussion? Vote. Bailey?
Yes.
Clotman?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Sears?
I'm standing.
Yes. Yes. Item number twenty-eight, action is any from executive session, there will be no action taken at this time. Item number twenty-nine, we have, uh, two nine, three nine thirty, thirty-one. We've already done thirty two. So we're down to item number thirty-five, we need to make sure we're down.
I have one real quick. And Project Tallahassee cleanup is June tenth, this is when the Free Will Baptist come into town. They usually bring at least a hundred volunteers, they help us tremendously picking up trash, cleaning the lakes, they help us with the park. June tenth. The kids, the kids will come in at about one o'clock and they will work till three thirty. And what I need is donations of all of the water, and my challenge is for Tallahassee to match them, volunteer, volunteer. Every year, these people come in from all over the home and help us clean up our town. And it would be wonderful to have their efforts appreciated and we have articles there helping them instead of going, hey, my help is people, what do they do?
Can there be a news size article in the page?
Well, let me tell you how much they send me on the trash haul. I submitted that three weeks in a row. It was a whole page, they took it down to two sentences, we put it over in the news. It was awful. I had put in there what we could extend or we couldn't. Uh, there was a pretty good write-up and they didn't.
I find social media to be much more effective than the local newspaper.
Was that a problem with the editor?
It's a Free Will Baptist group that comes in for K P A. I've been doing it for several years now.
I even called, I have two different people that assured me they would get it on. Did the, I faxed it here and emailed it here, and then I did the same thing in Wilton. And they rewrote it, they basically did two sentences.
How long, how many hours do they normally stay? Usually it's between two and a half to three, although last year, they stayed in the work till almost four o'clock because I wanted to get that part finished.
What is the area, what, what is their area where they work? I mean, I know you're going to put it in the paper, but.
We're looking for projects, so. Projects, um, we went out to the lake, we went to the cemetery and cleaned all tombstones. They've walked all over this town, whatever the town feels like we need help with, they are here to serve. My problem last year is that we didn't have much equipment, and they are coming with all their camping stuff and luggage, they don't have equipment or anything. But we were able to clean up this whole house next door there, this little elderly man that no longer lived there, I got his permission and they did an awesome job cleaning that up. So that was a little property that they cleaned up. But if we could partner in with the local people and say, I'll bring my equipment to this address and you have people come here. We'd get a lot more of these things cleaned up without having to go and find people who are, without having to go and, you know, get a.
On social media, there's, there's, um, there's Tallahassee Yard Sales where they post like flyers. And most of your community here is on that.
and most of your community here is on that, I mean, as far as Tallahassee.
I'm gonna need to sign up, it's got a place here for suggestions, what areas you think need to be done. Um, because it's hard for me to come out, and all, all of you guys help me think. On that day, I would appreciate any of the council members coming to help me guide this. Donny helped me last year, he brought me the stain for the pirate ship. But it usually takes me and all the maintenance department just going and meeting with these people and getting on what they need, and it, you know, we'll usually spend a couple hundred dollars just on supplies like that, getting paint brushes, and water, and rollers, or trash bags, whatever we need, so. And any donations of time, money, equipment, we'd greatly appreciate it.
And I am working on a Facebook page for the town.
Okay.
So, we have, uh, Tallahassee space?
Right.
Have you seen it?
I have, I have.
We look forward to this. We actually do. And good deeds, actually, it's actually, that right there's gonna go on there.
Is there any more additions for the town? Item number thirty-six, Donny, do you...
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments. Uh, for the last few months, I've been told that we've been caught up on the IRS. And when I was in this week, I've got a letter here to show that we made a payment made on the first for the third and fourth quarter two thousand thirteen, so that means we're not, we weren't caught up.
Item.
I, I can't take responsibility for what anyone else told you. Um, all I can tell you is when I met with the IRS back in February, and we completed the negotiations, then they considered us satisfied. At that time, I was required to schedule some future payments, the last of those had drafted.
Uh, and you told me, we still haven't got a copy of that letter, settlement letter?
That's correct. I can show you the email, or you know what, I can even give you the lady's number. She was glad for you guys to call, because she wasn't able to provide something in writing, but you can speak directly with the revenue agent if you want.
And, and you can tell me, in fact, that there is no more payments to be made?
I, I, there aren't been a lot about it, so, yeah.
Back payments, exactly.
Back payments.
Right, exactly.
Well, it's true, this is a back payment.
Well, yeah, exactly right, yeah.
And, and, and we were told they were all taken care of two months ago, and we made a payment. In fact, we made one in, in April, and another one in May.
Right.
And I would have to go.
So, like, we weren't, we weren't caught up.
I was like terrified though, that, um, the IRS did come in, I heard that on the street, that small trick, the IRS didn't come in and threaten Jackie or myself, and they did. Uh, I was at home after a car wreck, and she hadn't paid me a visit, and yes, that's what it was, they garnished our wages because we signed the checks. So I just want to make sure everybody knows that did happen. And, uh, I would tell you to call her, but she has since been passed away.
And, and my other question was, I was told we made a settlement, but I see here we're paying a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the IRS, and before I was told it was a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty. So I don't see a settlement made anywhere. What, what was the settlement that we paid them?
Listen, I don't know what hundred and fifty or hundred and sixty do you talk about. I can show you the credits that were granted, there were plenty of those. Um, I can tell you that we're paying in full now, and I would gladly give you the revenue agents that received.
Well, I need to represent or say, if it's a hundred and eighty-five is what we actually paid, what was the actual total that is due?
Uh, I can give that for you, would you like that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, I can give that for you.
Because all this time, I've been informed by a lot of board members that that total was around a hundred and fifty or a hundred and sixty, we made a settlement, paid it.
Well, they had, uh, actually had round, had a discussion one time, and shit down, and stuff.
Yeah.
So, uh, I know that I got the emails like everybody else, since they came in.
Well, I didn't get any emails, that's what I'm saying. So I was having to get a lot of the board members to tell me what was going on, and I was informed this, informed that, and that, and that, it's not true.
Let me see that.
That's the letter, I always said, when they came in that day, and she was going through order to order with them, and making arrangements or settlements with her?
Yeah, we just had to go ahead and schedule them.
It was all except the last, I think it was the last two quarters.
Well, first of all, there's a few of those, and granted, it's minimal, but not all of those are IRS. Some of those back taxes are state unemployment, you know, and actually, the ones for the tax commission aren't even on there. I mean, tell me exactly what you want, I'll give it for you.
What was our comment we had to do, and what was the agreement, the waiver, the...
Okay.
The credit they gave us, or whatever.
Okay, here's what I'll do. Because, you know, it grew over time as IRS stepped to...
That's why I want to pay off as quick as possible, because they'd be in interest.
Absolutely, and that's, I'll ask them to get it paid off, so here's what I'm gonna do. I'll give you the total at the time of payoff, and then I'll give you the abatements that we were granting for all, okay? Um, I'll get that together for you, and I'll fit that in the email.
So when is this payment?
That's the electronic cut-off tax payment system, that's how we schedule IRS payments on you.
And I'll go back to the neighbors to get an email on that.
Absolutely, and so, basically, what happened was, you know, the day that she came in, and I scheduled tons of payments that day, and then I didn't want to tap us on, cash that badly, so we came to an agreement for the abatements, where I said, okay, let me go ahead and schedule this for you, and I'll show you this quick payment, and we'll consider it done, you see what I'm saying? But I'll get that to all y'all, that's not a problem.
I can give you some of the address.
Uh, my other, uh...
You said who?
Uh, a board member comment was, uh, on this voting pool. Um, we already determined the hours, if you know.
Yes.
Okay, so there couldn't be anything on time, what, what was it determining you have on time, or whatever?
Well, we're already June the first.
June the first.
I'm making the sign, but...
They have to have them per week.
And they were closed on Sunday. What I have, what we've kind of worked on is being open late for swim on Monday, and to open swim until seven thirty, not booking a party then.
Yeah, we need to set it on our special meeting, discuss this voting pool, and look at the fundraisers, and the sponsorship awards, and different things like that.
My question, and since we got so lengthy, I didn't put it on there. In the past, they have done ages three and under, gained free swim. And Shannon's asking me, are we gonna still do that?
Well, I don't think so. And like we discussed today, nobody gets in free with our, like, bill card and stuff like that. Now, I mean, after what I built on force, than, than anybody.
Uh...
And is that free enough without rental? Without rental?
No, because they have to be seven or eight, because I thought it was open now, unless it changed. But I believe it's seven, I think it has to be seven before they can go out themselves.
Uh, are we soliciting donations?
I have not, this week.
Anytime, do it, uh...
I solicited donations for pool equipment, yes.
Okay, does the money come in to the town, or is it coming to you?
It came to me, and I purchased the equipment and moved back there, and I have...
You can't do that, it has to come straight to the city.
Ah, whoever's here.
I mean, if you want to know what we're supposed to do, that's what we're supposed to be, you can't go to an individual, it has to come straight to the city.
So what's the difference, then, if I go out and purchase it, or they just bring me equipment?
Okay, I tell you what, any auditor will tell you, you can't do it. It has to come to the city, they have to make a donation to the city, auditor will throw a ticket.
Yeah, of course, I'm gonna do that. Do we, uh, write the receipt?
I didn't write it, you know, we need to receive to the people that...
So it has to come to the city, period.
Yeah, and, and the city doesn't, they, they...
Like a record, and did write a receipt once the city received it.
Well, I know that...
And I can see in a way that any board member who sets cash donations, that would be setting you up, I mean...
Well, that's why I think a receipt should be, you know, married, it would...
Right, right.
But I can tell you, the auditor will say, it has to go straight to the city.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh...
Any donations have, have to go to the city.
Do you have a record of your contributions made to you?
Yeah, I wrote it down, I've got the receipts.
But you're not doing it now, you have the, uh...
And she thought it came with the hand, and, I mean, I put on there, we pulled up, and they said, if I give the money, you'll buy a glue-up for the plump, I guess, I got a receipt of what I bought, I got money left on. And it was an individual that gave, was three, three in the dozen.
I, I don't think I'd want to do that, I mean...
Then they just still have to give to the city, like...
Well, he was a rent, they trust me, I understand it.
It doesn't matter.
We'll correct that.
I can, I can get you a receipt, it's what he's saying. It wasn't much money, but you know, like...
Any more, or comments? Item number thirty-second. Make a motion to adjourn. We have a motion? In a second? We want any, we have a second?
No, we can't say it.
Okay. Vote. Amy?
Yes.
Paul? Yes. Here?
Yes, you're wonderful, amazing, Chris.
Yes.
Boy, you think I'm ready, my homie.
We got one here, huh?
Yeah.